Let's call the meeting into order for January 3rd, 2024. We'll start with the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all.
Okay, warrant and bills assigned, correct?
Yep.
Yes.
Approve the agenda?
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
All in favor? Minutes of the last meeting, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of the December 20th, 2023 minutes.
Second.
All in favor? Town administrator, weekly update?
All right, just a couple of things to update you on this week. First is to let you know that the town report is 99.999% complete. We're waiting for one item that the treasurer is pulling out of the audit, and we're waiting for the short audit, which I know that Tom will touch on later. But next week, you guys will all leave with bound copies to approve. So we are way ahead of schedule and ready to go with that.
Awesome.
Next is just to update you on an email that we got from the fire chief letting us know that the pump has arrived for engine two. And that's the special project that you guys had approved. So it's being worked on. It's in the shop, and hopefully we have it back sooner than later.
Good.
Next is our sheriff's update for the month of December. Starting on December 2nd, vehicle was stopped on Cross Road. The individual failed to announce that he had a concealed and loaded handgun. He was, a firearm was seized, and he was charged. On December 5th, there was a response to Hopper Road in Acton that there was a motor vehicle in the tree. The occupants did flee, fled the scene, but they eventually were able to track them down. Even though the vehicle was unregistered, there was some receipts in mail in the vehicle. So they were able to find them that way. On December 9th, they responded to Willie's ale room for a theft report. The business owner reported that two males had been in the parking lot, and it looks like they stole a leaf blower from a customer's car. Contact was made with the subject, who eventually, the subject did drop off a leaf blower and fled the scene. So.
Sold it or returned a leaf blower?
They returned it, yes. Good news. On December 10th, there was a response to Deering Ridge Road in Chapeli for a report of a truck that backed into a mobile home, causing minor damage. The individual was charged with an OUI. On December 11th, there was investigation of a hit and run that occurred on the turnpike in Biddeford. It turns out that the individual was a resident of Milton Mills Road. When the police got there, he was well intoxicated and confrontational. So they handled it from there. Also, on the 11th, there was a response to a home on East Shore Drive for a mental health call. There was a minor that was in crisis and tried setting the house on fire. Looks like they were able to extinguish it, and crisis was on scene. On the 18th of December, they were dispatched to a home on Flat Ground Road. And I think we heard about this actually last weekend or two weekends ago. This is where the intruder seemed drunk, and he was looking for a female. And turns out he was in the wrong home and didn't hurt the property owner. We had a resident tell us about that at the podium.
Same story we got, but yeah.
Yeah, that's similar. He broke him. On the 24th, Christmas Eve, they investigated the report of a skydiver who possibly had under deployed his chute over Chapeli. Sorry, I can't look at Tom. His facial expression when I read these. So the skydiver under deployed his chute somewhere over Chapeli.
Under deployed?
Yes.
It didn't fully open, from what I understand.
So someone called in indicating that somebody was falling from the sky. So game ordens, air traffic control, everybody was notified. They have not yet found said skydiver falling from the sky. On the 26th, they investigated a stolen vehicle from a residence on Orchard Road. The vehicle was stolen from the driveway. The window was open. They did end up finding the vehicle later on Gauding Road. The investigation continues. On the 26th, they investigated criminal mischief at Pine Springs in Chapeli. Vehicle pushed the school bus shelter off its footing at the end of the road and ran over the mailbox. This matches similar criminal mischief that's been going on in the area. Investigations continue. On the 30th, they dispatched to a home on Loon Lane in Chapeli where a 64-year-old male was found deceased. The family advised the deputies that the subject had been battling cancer, as well as an infection in his leg. The death was not considered suspicious, and the subject's doctor is willing to sign up on the death certificate. On the 30th, the deputies responded to a home on Nason Road for burglary in progress. The subject at the address indicated that she was viewing live cameras inside her home, and there were two people in there. They responded and found the house empty. On the 31st, they were dispatched to a home on Back Road for domestic disturbance. 31st, they were dispatched to Acton Ridge Road for a fight in the streets between several people. Upon arrival, nearly everyone had left, and no one wanted to press charges. There was some intoxication and some arrests made that evening. And on the 31st, they responded to back to Pine Springs where two brothers got into a pretty good fight. They were both on probation. Yeah, so they issued disorderly warning conduct. As you know, next item is to talk about the fitness center. As you know, we have an RFP out right now for the removal of it. We've got some good response from it. We've got a lot of contractors that have called, people that have come down. Thank you to Jason, who's helping me meet the contractors over there and kind of doing their contractor thing to answer the questions. So I appreciate his help. As we went through it, and Tom and I actually took a walk over it, over to it. I've reached out to the library and to the rec to get them to take their items out. When Tom and I talked about it, we had, he had an idea, I think, we came up with is once it's cleaned out, putting something out there saying, listen, you know, between this period and this period, make a sealed bid donation for everything that's in there. You gotta take it all. We're not piecing it out. We're not spending the time. We've talked to the fire department. They don't want anything left in there. We think there's one treadmill that needs to go to the transfer station. But there's other things that people have asked about.
There's some decent equipment in there.
Transfer station?
There's, it's junk.
Okay, yeah.
So what's left in there, the mirrors, some equipment, we think that people, people have inquired about it.
Some dumbbells and weight benches and rather, rather expensive Bowflex machines.
Instead of just knocking it down with it in there, we say between these two periods, we'll seal them, we'll open them on this date. Maybe you get five up.
I like that Storage Wars thing.
Yeah, kind of thing. Come in, dig it.
Yeah.
They can't look, they can't look in it?
No, no, they can look.
Well, Storage Wars, you gotta look through the door.
No, no, I do, let them come in. Somebody wants to put a bid on it, let them do it.
So if it's okay with you, we'll work on getting it cleaned out. I'll let you know as soon as it is. I'll draft something to put before you.
That sounds good.
And like I said, I've checked with.
At least it's fair and open so that, you know, anybody can, you know, put a bid in for it.
That's gonna be an all or nothing bid?
Yeah.
I thi- I think so, unless it, I don't think we wanna.
Then I'm not so sure how it's gonna work, but try.
Well, there's not that much, there's not that much in there.
Doesn't matter anyways. If they take the good stuff and leave the other stuff, it's just gonna go in the dumpster when the rest of the building does.
Yeah, yeah.
But we, yeah.
Right?
Yeah, it's just, we don't wanna, we don't have the time, the staff, to start itemizing items.
I'm not gonna have a, yeah, that's.
No, we are in sales. Update based on, I think, Ed mentioned it a week or two ago, Blueberry Hill. Ed and I are meeting with the property owner tomorrow evening about that, so we'll keep you updated on how that goes. I did speak to the EMA director, and he doesn't have the plans quite ready for the board, but we'll in the very upcoming meetings, remember, we talked two weeks ago.
A plan for?
Well, two weeks ago, when we talked about some of the things going on, you guys had asked for, what are, what is Acton's emergency plan?
Yep.
Can we see how that's laid out? You know, what triggers this and this, and just so you could review it.
Coming down to power origins and stuff.
No, I do, I do. It, you know, I believe we have a plan. My guess is we do. Your county has one.
Yes, and that's what we're trying to.
That covers the town.
Rick to present to you.
I guess, I guess my interest was knowing if, given the weather event we had, and we had a number of people without power for a number of days, did it get executed well? If not, what could we do to improve it? It's not a matter of, you know, coming in and pointing fingers, but more just to understand. It just seemed to me that there could have been more of a response. That would be my take on it. Now, maybe that's unrealistic, but if we could have had more of a response, what could it be? And how do we make sure we have that response in the future?
And I think that was the start of.
Does that sound right?
That's part of why I gave the plan.
Right, so see what that looks like, and maybe it needs to be tweaked.
I don't know. When I've seen those plans from, they're.
Generic.
I'm not sure you could pull that plan off the shelf and say, we should have done this, this, and this, and this. It's almost like, well, let's look at what happened, and let's do a debrief on that. Let's do a debrief on that, and are we satisfied with the response or not? And if not, what can we do to make sure that we have a response that we can all be comfortable with?
So maybe when he has it together, we can.
Yeah, yeah. But I'm not interested in just seeing a, you know, three ring binder with a plan. I mean, those things are, you gotta have them, but generally, they're, they're of limited value.
Everybody had the same plan, I think.
Yeah, yeah.
Emergency management plan.
Yeah.
They all coordinate with each other.
Yeah.
So we'll invite him in as soon as he has that together.
Okay, great, thank you.
Last one is more of a shout out to one of our local businesses. It's Mousen Valley Tech. As you know, Luke and Brandy Cynical own this. Last night, my husband will tell you, I'm addicted to work and my job. I got an email about 8:30, my phone done, so I looked at it. And it was a resident in town that her and her husband were literally cuddled up into one room. He's in a wheelchair, has a recent infection in his leg. He, the furnace went out. And then she had been making calls frantically to try to find somebody. She couldn't. I reached out to Luke and Brandy, both very ill, sick. I mean, they're fine, but just sick, you know. And I could share that. And they just, you know, went above and beyond. They sent Phoenix over, sent your son over. Within, I think it was by 9:01, I had an email from the property owner, you know, just saying, thank you so much. I mean, he fixed it. He was running for the night. They were able to come out of the bathroom where the little ceramic heater was. I mean, they just really saved the day.
Yeah, great.
So very thankful to have companies like that in Acton.
Thank you.
Yeah, I agree.
All I have for tonight.
Okay.
Liaison updates?
What's up?
Liaison updates.
Department head, community chair updates. Any? Okay, now we go to liaisons.
Okay. We, thank you. I have one, so. We had a need to withdraw some money from the bank account, excuse me, the investment accounts that we have. So we moved $750,000 end of December, 1st of January. It was in the process of being moved into our checking account. We had some, some large warrants associated with the school department needed to be covered. So we moved 750. We still have a little over $4 million invested, if you will, and held by TD Bank. And we have a million dollars sitting in our checking account, so in total about $5 million. So things are working as planned there. What this, the reason I report this out is so that people understand that we're able to get access to cash when we need it. So I think things are going well there. We received a draft, I think it's a final draft, of the audit. And I've had a chance to go through that. It's 111 pages. And I've, I've, after a couple of reviews, a few corrections, they now are working on a final, a final report. There's one area that we need to wait for the school to finalize their report, because of course, the schools' audit and financials get incorporated in the towns. But just looking at the draft schools and the towns' financials, I can, I can say that the towns' portion of it is in good shape. So hopefully in the next week or so, we're gonna get the school board to accept or, you know, get the auditors to revise for any corrections they have. And I'm hoping in, you know, next week, we're able to, to report out that we've got an audit. I just wanted to review for everyone what I've seen so far in the audit. And I shouldn't say so far. These are, are, I think, final numbers. We ended the year with $5,948,000 in cash. That compares to the prior year of $6,183,000. So it's about 100, about $250,000 less in cash. That's actually better than we would have thought. We had significant draws from our reserves for various purposes throughout the year. And so the cash position is actually quite good and strong compared to where we thought we would be. Our total fund balances for the combined entity of the town and the school amount to $5,220,000. So that's the fund balances, if you will, or think about them as reserves, or it could be undesignated reserves, or capital reserves, or special purpose reserves. But in total, there's $5.2 million. The town had a surplus to budget. That doesn't mean it had a surplus of revenue over expenses. It's, you take, this is what the budget was, and this was what the actuals were, and the difference is what I'm calling a surplus. So we had planned on a budget of X, and the actuals came in at this, at something different. We had a $573,000 surplus at the town, the town level. So obviously, that's a good result. But I think, I think I can speak for the rest of the board members, that, that's higher than it should be. But I will also say that it's fortunate that we have that surplus, because the town doesn't really have a capital budget, per se. We aren't deliberately putting money aside for capital. So instead, what we're doing is relying on these surpluses, and hopefully they're enough to meet our capital needs. So in the future, we'd like to get a little more specific about what we think we should be putting into capital reserves, and trying to then get the operating surplus down to a much lower number. And so we hit our budget, but we're putting money aside for capital needs as we have. But, so we had a $573,000 surplus. There is a, and by the way, I, some of these are schedules that came from the audit. Some are schedules that I prepared. There's a schedule in the audit that lists all of our revenue accounts and all of our expense accounts. Shows you what the budget, the actuals were, and the surplus. So if you wanna know where that, $573,000, hopefully next work week, you'll be able to look at the detail and see exactly where that came from. Revenue was, had a surplus to budget of $165,000. Most of that came from real estate and motor vehicle taxes.
Excise.
Excise taxes. That's where most of it came from. That was 126 out of the $165,000. Came from those two lines alone. And the rest of them are relatively small amounts divided among all the accounts. On the expense side, we had a surplus to budget of $408,000. So that, plus the revenue surplus is where I got that $573. And the, the surplus came about from land use. Didn't spend all of their budget. And we're gonna talk about that a little later on. We go through the municipal budget that we're looking at for the next fiscal year. Municipal management had a surplus. Fire rescue had a $75,000 surplus. Public works had 125, that's basically the roads, $125,000 surplus. And then the rest is spread among various accounts. So in total, $573,000. I've also got a list of reserve accounts that will show what they were last year, what they are this year. When the audit is released, we'll release this. This isn't something you can find anywhere in the audit. It's spread throughout various schedules. But this schedule will give you exactly how much we have in reserves for both the town and the school. And how much is undesignated or in specific purpose reserves. The school department, as I said, is still in the process of reviewing their audit. I've seen a couple versions of this. I'm not involved in their audit process, so this is still subject to change, but they had a significant surplus as well. And so we'll hear more about where that's coming from once they issue their report. And I'd like to be able to report that out here so that, you know, if people aren't watching school board, if they're watching here, at least they'll get a sense of what's going on there. But a surplus in similar size to the town. I'll just leave it at that.
Now, Tom, can I ask you?
Yeah.
The, I hear from a lot of people, they're very interested and appreciate the knowledge that you provide in these. Can we post your documents? They're a little easier to read and understand.
I, I will. I'll give them to you once, once we get a signed opinion from the auditor.
They're just easier than looking for everything. Just put it all together on a spreadsheet.
Okay, happy to do that. I think that's everything. Any questions? Do I take questions now, David? Any questions? Okay.
Come on up, Lee.
Yeah.
Real quick, are you gonna get a management letter from the auditors this year?
We should.
Will that be public?
There's no reason for it not to be. It's not a confidential document, so yes.
Anybody else?
Okay.
Liaison update?
We've been spending time working on the budget. We've continued to work on APAT, and we're gonna hear about that maybe next week. Cemetery, I'm gonna, we're gonna get together sometime, next week or so. Pretty much rounds out my efforts.
Good.
Just, once again, just budget updates. Working with the fire department, working with the transfer station to get the budgets done. And they are pretty much done, and they'll be next on the list coming up.
Next week, both of them.
Yep. And Lincoln School, we're just still waiting for some numbers, so.
Are we hoping, just so we don't forget, are we hoping to put something, possibly put something for Lincoln School in this warrant? So that we can make a note? We have a do not forget list we're working on.
I mean, if we wanna keep it good, I think we probably oughta.
So we may wanna.
I don't think we're gonna be looking at anything earth shattering. I think just, we probably should.
I think we could come up with a number we could start with.
Yeah, I believe so.
Just don't wanna forget it.
I'll push them this next week, too, and see if we can get them going.
We'll be attending the school board this month, but nothing update. They haven't gotten the audit yet. And then I know that Conservation and Forestry is gonna be setting a meeting, and Mary Grant is, I believe they set a meeting, but I'm not 100% sure.
It is next Tuesday. And a reminder to Joe, we need to get you sworn in for that meeting.
For the conservation?
Yeah.
Okay, and then Mary Grant has that one. I believe it's for January 12th?
20th.
20th. It's hardly new, but I can't remember, because there's a two, Saturday. But so I will be attending both those meetings.
Okay, cool. Well, I met with Will and Leslie last night, going over their budgets. And, well, Will's budget. And the rec committee's got a meeting tomorrow night, I believe, at 6 o'clock. You gonna be there, Mr. DiCamp? We're gonna, we're gonna try to do liaison.
About 5 o'clock, I think, 5.
5 o'clock? Okay, thank you. We're gonna do our liaison and selectmen thing at the same time, try to kill two birds with one stone, so. Okay, that's my update. Old business, engineering project updates.
So I reached out to Chris Taylor to find out where we were at with our three projects. I'm just gonna read you what he said about each one of them.
Okay.
So, "Transfer station, a meeting was held with DEP at transfer station on 12/14. Ed attended the meeting and can provide a summary of the meeting. The DEP provided copies of the existing solid waste permit and amendments with the maps. The map showed the approximate area of the landfill, which can provide better direction on where work can and can't be performed. We are only authorized for schematic design and are waiting for feedback on the concept plans."
Interesting. We talked to him the day we were up there and said, "Here's what we'd like to do. The other plans you gave us were close. Here's one that was closest. Can you work off of that one and give us this?"
Do we have a copy of that proposed draft for the full board? Because what I remembered, and I could have missed something, is that the last time we passed out those three or four plans, nobody liked any of them.
No, they listed to extremes, and like either those extremes.
I know that somebody had asked if we have something that the rest of them can look at, too?
After that meeting, Dave and I and.
Charlie.
Charlie.
Robin.
Robin sat up here and kinda came up with a better.
So that's what they have?
Better concept, and that's what was told them to work off of that, and this is what we'll work.
So you've given that to them.
Yeah.
Yet they're saying that they're waiting for us.
Yeah.
Which doesn't make any.
So I'm having to reach out to Chris tomorrow and say exactly that.
Yeah. Yeah.
So we believe that we've given him something on site.
Yeah, and I'll be here, what, tomorrow night for that meeting, but Chris probably won't be at work then, but.
Right, let me see, I'll get you guys in touch, okay.
Yeah.
All right, so the rec field. So I had a call with David on 12/5. He indicated that the town wanted to proceed with the survey and the wetland delineation of the parking lot expansion. Attached is a proposal that was previously provided with the services listed as additional services. On the call, David indicated that he was interested in possibly having a survey or determine the property lines along Route 109 and the northerly property line in the area of the parking expansion. The boundary determination was excluded from the scope of survey services. The estimated budget would increase from $6,500 to $7,500 if the boundary determination is added. So please sign the attached if you wanna go forward with that. So they feel like they've done.
65 to 75, $1,000.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So.
That's fine.
We'll get that added under business and get it signed, so they're not waiting for us.
Because at the end of the day, we've got two issues here. We obviously wanna maximize the size of the parking lot. And we wanna make sure that we're within, you know, wetlands and all that. But we also have the issue with the state, because they wanna come down and they might eat.
Take some property in the front.
Take some of our property.
I thought they said that they, I thought one of the emails, they said that they're just gonna borrow it, but they weren't gonna actually take it.
Well, but we, at least we'll know where everything is, and when that time comes. So it's killing two birds with one stone, is what we're gonna do here.
Should we have a motion now for the $1,000?
You can if you'd like.
I think it makes sense.
Why not do it, and then get ready to move forward? I'll make a motion that we improve, increase the Sebago contract amount by $1,000 to do the appropriate surveying for the site.
All in favor?
There you go.
So we get that ball rolling? I did explain, I did tell them that after we get that done, I'd like to meet with the engineer and kinda give an idea of what we wanna do here.
Okay.
And I wanna get this ball rolling, and so this spring now, we can put an RFP out there, get a parking lot built.
All right, so I'll get a couple signatures on that, and we'll talk about the last one. So the last one is the road assessment. So I'm gonna forward you an email. This map, I think, was intended for larger than our printer's print. But attached is a draft of the pavement condition map. We will follow up with a full draft report within a couple of weeks. So it'll be easier to look at on your computer when you can, you know, enlarge the PDF. But essentially, every road is color coded. There is a small legend down in the corner, and you can determine the condition of each one. But they're still working on it. They did provide this. I'll send it to you electronically. But, you know, just to give you an update on where they're at.
Yep.
I wanna have a map.
Okay, new business. Yeah, I wanna pass that to Jen there, please. Okay, we got an executive session here.
I move that we move into executive session 4056A-1, personal issue, personnel issue.
Second.
All in favor?
So we would.
Do I hear a motion?
I move that we come out of executive session 4056A-1, personnel issue at 7:19 PM.
Seconded.
All in favor? Okay. We have a decision here. Tom?
Well, actually, I think we're gonna get into it as we review the budget. It'll be a opportune time to talk about it then.
Okay.
Makes sense, Jennifer?
We can do that.
Okay, fair enough.
Okay. So we're gonna move.
There was no decision, but there'll be a recommendation that we'll cover a little later.
Okay, we're gonna go down to B, budget. Municipal management budget.
So we've been working with the individual departments, and we are here tonight. The treasurer is going to present to you the proposed municipal management budget, which essentially covers everything from selectmen's office, from mine, elections, land use, finance. Kelly, take it away. And do we have handouts?
Oh, yeah.
Paper are we working from? Because I can't lay my hand on my property, so, sorry.
This is.
So we have this schedule we're working on?
No, this is the one.
It starts with governing body.
Right here.
What was that?
This right here. Starts with governing body. They go in, there you go, right there.
Yep. Well, it says page one, but it's the third page.
Actually, yeah, page one, three pages in.
All right, Kelly, so as I understand it, we're just gonna go down to you, give a brief description of what we got going on here.
Okay, so just to get started, there was no increase in the selectmen salary at all, but we, that increase there is just for the fifth selectman that will be joining the team. And then just the taxes that are associated with that. The office assistant line.
Gym?
Oh, I'm sorry. We didn't put anything in for the gym, because that building will be torn down. So we're not budgeting anything for that line. The office assistant and the deputy clerk, those positions have increased because they're budgeted on 40 hours for 52 weeks. They don't necessarily work 40 hours. They work 36. 52 weeks. They don't necessarily work 40 hours, they work 36. And one of them was promised to come up to 40 after she was fully trained. So one of those positions will be a 40-hour position eventually, and the other one will remain at 36.
So basically, the extra four hours is, think about it as an overtime budget, the extent to which anyone is, at times of the year, there are certain overtime needed, so that extra four hours that, you know, for 52 weeks is basically for overtime. Can I suggest that some of these smaller ones we just skip over? I wouldn't go over every line.
Okay.
Because they're so small, it really, at least in my perspective, doesn't matter. It's not going to move any deal.
We're going to post this anyways, right?
Huh?
We're going to post this.
We'll post this anyways, that's right.
Okay, so then, unemployment and workers' comp, they're just estimates from past bills that we've, that we have. The health insurance is increased.
Well, for workers' comp, we, that's an insurance?
Yeah.
So we got a quote from the carrier on that one, or did we not yet?
No, that is, that is the estimate that, because it all goes, if we have injuries, so it can.
It's on experience?
Yeah, so it could go up or down.
So if we didn't get a quote, where did that number come from, so I can understand?
I called, and I talked to them.
So that's what they recommended?
Right.
Twelve thousand, 100, and the $7,000 against a prior, current year budget of 13 for unemployment contribution?
Because we had some dividends that they issued to us that lowered our premium.
Wonderful. So again, that's kind of a firm number. Both those are, we can consider firm numbers. All right. Health insurance, what did it on there?
And the health insurance is for just the municipal staff, plus a job opening that is upcoming.
So for this one, we budgeted for what our current employee's coverage is at their annual rates, correct?
Plus one.
Plus that, plus that new position.
One was a vacancy to, yeah, okay, good.
And then the next one would be, it's main per's retirement. It's also longevity for the municipal staff and the vacation buyout. And then office supplies, postage. None of these little ones have changed much, except for dues, membership. It went from $7,000 down to $2,500. And computer repair maintenance went up by $3,000, because the computers here are getting older, and we're going to have to be replacing some.
So that line doubled?
Yeah.
And the audit we took down because it was just overstated, or this is what we're, our current audit fee is $12,000? So we increased it to 13, is that what it's called?
Right.
Okay.
Let's see, so town hall electricity doubled, because the rates have doubled. Our December bill was almost $1,200, and our summer bills are about $700, so I just did an average. I took six months at $1,200 and six months at the lower to come up with that. Telephone increased a small amount. Software rental in fatrio went up, almost $2,000. Property and casualty insurance, we did a 5% increase. When I spoke to them, they're not ready to give us any idea whether our premium's going to go up or down, so we just did a standard 5%. Oh, yeah, and then the only other one probably to mention is lawn care. That bid, the bid that came in was $15,960. Election worker didn't change, except for the supplies for the food. Jen feeds the staff here for the, at the elections, and needed to increase that line.
And we do do regular supplies out of there, too. That's not just $3,000 worth of food.
No, I know.
Just an announcement.
The registrar salary didn't change.
Okay, let me pick it up here. Talking about finance. As you know, in July, we engaged an accounting firm to provide us accounting services to support sort of, well, let me back up. Previously, the town really relied on our auditor to perform our accounting services. And as we saw last year, it was April, before we had a set of financials, which meant we were 10 months into the year, before we knew the results from the prior year, because we didn't have an ability to actually do a profit and loss statement. And I think that's actually been a condition in place for some time. And, you know, it's not that unusual, from what you find in other towns, that, you know, they operate like that. So we engaged Talbot Royer, I forget the third one, there's another name in there, but in any event, Mark Roy, who has come here, Barry, Mark Roy, who has come here and spoken to it. Mark sent us a letter about the 20th of December, telling us that due to health issues, the firm is going to no longer provide these services to towns. So there are a number of towns that he currently supports that he's notified them of, and told them that by the, by March, those services will discontinue. So, what are we going to do? There were really two kinds of things that they were doing for us. Now, of course, we have a treasurer who continues to be fully employed, and the only thing that substantially changed in her job was the accounts payable, the actual cutting of a check in preparation of the warrant. That was done by Mark Roy's firm. But all of the prep work that was done to look at the invoices, make sure they got their right account number, that they're within budget, et cetera, those were always done here. Mark would have also verified that information, but the treasurer was doing that. So, and the payroll was always been, had always been done here. We did not move that to Mark Roy. So the thing we have to immediately do is figure out what to do with accounts payable. We told Mark that effective January 1st, we are now going to take back accounts payable, and that effectively, we're going to cut off his services in terms of transactional processing on December 31st. And so that we have a clean break. He did the first six months of the year, we'll do, we'll pick it up thereafter. So, and we're going to move to a weekly warrant process until everything gets settled out here. So Kelly will prepare the warrant and the checks for accounts payable, and otherwise, she'll continue to do what she's always done. Now the question is, what do we do about the other things? Higher level, what I'll call accounting services? This will take a trained accountant to do, someone that can really assist us with our operating budget work, forecasting, someone that can help us with capital planning, and help us more broadly with financial issues in the town. Let's say we're trying to figure out what to do with a surplus policy. Mark Roy, in fact, was, did a fine job, but that's where we would have looked to. Tell us what other towns are doing. What are the possibilities we could do? Let's look at the warrants and see how we could streamline those. He was very effective in helping us do that. He reaches out and works with a lot of different firms to be able to give us that advice. I've done some checking. I, I can't find anyone to step into that role. There's a couple of firms, I found one, but I think they're going to be so expensive that it will be prohibitive for us to consider doing it. So we had, in our executive session, a discussion about what to do here. And I, I had suggested, and with Jennifer, that we move forward to create a director of finance position. And basically, to provide those higher level services that we talked about, with a different level for accounting and budgeting and, you know, financial management practices. So create a position for a director of finance, and, and move to fill that position. Now, so in a moment, I'll make a motion that we move forward with creating that position and begin the search for it. But, you know, as I, as I went through the financials today, I don't think you want to rely on a selectman to provide a level of review and financial management expertise for the town. It's fortunate I have that capability and expertise, but that may not always be the case. And so, but you should know, there's a fair amount of work that goes into that. When I got that audited statement, I spent a good, solid three days reviewing that statement, and then preparing a set of my own schedules so that I could understand what was going on there and be able to explain it to people who don't necessarily have that training. They have other training. We need somebody in the town to be able to do that. I think, as an example, I think buried in that audit report was information about how our budgets were doing. I don't think that was easy to find. It took me a while to find it. And so by getting that information out, I think we've got a lot more understanding about our budget, what the performance of the budget is, and I think the town just needs that kind of capability on a going-forward basis, and they shouldn't be relying on a selectman to do it. So I would, I would recommend, I'd like to make a motion, that we authorize the creation of a director of finance position, and begin the search for that position, and that we would ask Jennifer to reach out to, this is a common position, this is not something unique to Acton, to develop a job description for that, and move forward with advertising and recruiting someone in that position.
So your motion is to advertise and to create?
Create the position. That's, that's right. And we'll determine the salary, once we've done a little more work on this, what the salary range ought to be. But we think we've provided for that in this budget, an adequate amount. And, but I think it's unfortunate that, that Mark had a health problem. He was very, he regretted not being able to continue to provide this service. I think he really enjoyed it and did a great job at it. But the firm has decided they're just, they're getting out of this business altogether.
Mind it was a life-changing decision.
This is definitely a life-changing decision for him, and it had nothing to do with any concerns we had with his, his performance of the work that he was doing.
So basically, this is just taking what they're doing and bringing it back in-house?
That's right.
That's pretty much all it's.
Or, yes, trying to create in-house what we engaged them to do. I'll second it. Do you want to ask for any discussion, or?
Sure.
Any discussion?
Anybody got any comments? Lee, I see you over there. You're ready to go.
Is this type of work something that a town manager would normally have to do? Or would you have a town manager and a financial advisor?
I, I don't think it would be in a town manager's role. I think they're more of a general manager, and have a, a different kind of skill set. We're looking for someone here who does accounting and finance.
We're looking for Mark Roy in-house.
Mark Roy in-house, and, you know, hopefully a lot less than what he was making, but seriously, they're, these are common positions that you'll find in other towns. And some towns don't have it at all, and that's why they rely on their auditors to do it for them. And given the state of auditing in this, in this state, where you've got one firm doing it, and they've got 100 clients, and you end up with an audit 10 months later, I think it's wise for us to do this.
I wanted to just make a couple comments. Number one, I thought Mark Roy was phenomenal, and I thought it was a great move on the town to take on, have him take on that role. The financial reporting has been upgraded significantly and timely, and I hope that what you're recommending will provide a continuance of the quality of the reporting and the timeliness of the reporting going forward. And I'm sure that you have research to make sure there's no other firms that are providing that service. But to me, it made a lot of sense because of the, the breadth of background that he brought of what other municipalities were doing, and how this was going to impact our ability to put the budget together, and to move it from where we are today to something that's extraordinarily efficient. And I hope this works out, but finding key people like the director of finance come to a town the size of Acton, I think is going to be challenging to some extent. And the fact that there was a firm out there that was able to leverage their capabilities to multiple municipalities was a pretty good business model from my perspective.
You know, with, with Mark, he may be interested in providing some ongoing consulting services for the town that would not be physical and, you know, much of a strain on him. So that for those kinds of higher level questions we might have, where we want to know, you know, what are the best practices in this area, we may be able to tap into him to continue to provide those services. So I, and I think we could do that at a very reasonable rate, because I don't think it would be all that much that we would be doing it for.
And I'm assuming that, that you're confident that this is a full-time director of finance position for the town, as some that can't be co-managed across a couple municipalities?
Yeah, I, I gotta tell you, it's hard enough managing these things on your own. And, and, I, I would stay away from, I appreciate the, the thought. I was involved in the Boston Consortium, which we had all of the Boston institutions together, and we looked for ways in which we could collaborate and share resources, and it was tough. It's tough, because it's just very difficult to, you know, for an individual to serve multiple masters and not, you know, find, I think that's very difficult.
I acknowledge the toughness of that, but I also acknowledge getting the quality person to come to a town the size of Acton is also going to be a challenge.
What are the right pay and benefits they might? They've got a lot to offer.
We'll see what happens. It's the, it's the best plan at the moment. If, if we're unable to execute, we'll come back and figure out what to do. Fair enough. Thank you for your comment.
I thought he was going to come up and put his hat on, right?
Oh, yeah, he could actually do, he could be.
He was so excited over it, I thought he was going to say, I want, raise my resume.
Okay.
Okay, are we done with that?
Keep going.
Yeah, let's keep going.
Okay, so there's a.
We didn't vote, because you opened that up.
Yeah, I had a motion to move forward.
Then we discussed, and then we.
Seconded, and I put all in favor?
Thank you, gentlemen. Okay.
Okay, so to finish off the finance, there's a significant increase due to that newly created position. The town administrator, there's no significant.
Didn't have a change, did it?
Changes.
At all.
At all. Our assessment, our software map assessing went down a few thousand dollars.
But we just moved it to the other line to pay it out promptly, right?
Oh, yeah, that's right. And then the CEO, nothing's changed salary-wise. He did go down on that, the line that was the $21,000, that was for the, the, sorry, I forget now, the planner.
Consulting, planner, yeah.
Yeah, so that went down a few thousand. I think that's it for Jason. I don't think his, the training line. Sorry, I missed it.
The CEO, his, the salary line, that's obviously going to change when we decide whatever we're going to do.
Right, we have that deputy CEO line, we can.
And they're all going to, all those are just hypotheticals, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Well, they're, they're flatlined, and once we figure out what the salary increases, we'll go back in and we'll just, you know, put a math one.
I'll just kind of throw that out there to everybody else. That will change when we do a three, four, five, whatever it is.
And I don't have, I didn't tell the full board. So Jason will be with us on the 17th to go over the zoning changes that the planning board is moving forward, so he's happy to answer any questions on the subject. I told him he didn't have to be here.
Great. So we have one done. So, we have one done.
Jeff.
And you've got some others scheduled up, right?
I do. So, the next Wednesday, we will be hearing from the fire department, the transfer station, and APAT, Cable Division, 17th. We will hear from the rest committee and we'll hear from the zoning articles. And the 24th, we'll be doing the roads and any other miscellaneous ones. Just want to say it out loud that if you don't have your budget turned in yet, that doesn't mean you have until that date to finish it. Because in order to make this timeline, we've got to start writing the warrant articles now. So, so for the couple of, not to call them out, a couple of budgets, we're still waiting for some, you know, final touches on. Please don't let them wait until the date they're in front of.
Basically, you, you've, you've given them a date.
It's December 31st.
No, but January 10th, if I recall?
I think you, yeah, you mentioned that that would be the last.
Look, and I, I know our department heads will get them, but we can't let these dates slide.
Not to make an April meeting.
We're on a schedule to have a town meeting in April?
Yes.
We're doing whatever everybody wants.
And so, we got to get this budget done. So.
We cannot write the warrant.
By, we need your budgets by the 10th. If we don't have them, we'll just do what we can to put the budgets together.
No, we will.
Yeah, and so, we really want department heads to come in and give us their budget requests. And I think we're getting them. So, we'll have them all, we'll have these meetings. The warrant and finance committee is being invited to these meetings. So, a lot of that, give and take, questions and answers will be happening right here with the selectmen. And hopefully, that will streamline the process. And we expect to have these all written up by when? February 1st or so?
Yeah, we have, we, our plan is to turn the warrant over to the warrant and finance by February 1st. And like Tom said, the idea is that they join us in all of these January meetings so that you have very few questions come the time it's turned over in February. And then to have all the recommendations, I think the email said the 20th.
Yeah, 21st.
21st, okay, yeah.
The warrants will be hopefully presented to the.
The board that night.
The board of selectmen with the warrant and finance committee recommendations embedded in them. And we'll be able to vote on them at that point, and they'll be done. And then we can get ourselves ready for the town meeting.
I think the way we're doing it with the liaisons, like the other night when I met with Will and Leslie, you know, of course, when he submitted his budget, we were looking at it. You know, I was able to say, okay, we need to do this, this, and that, so he can fix it up.
And Leslie's right there hearing it.
Leslie was right there. So now, she's able to report that back to the finance committee. You know, we made sure that she, she, if she had any questions, if Will couldn't answer, I did. And I, I think it's expediting the process a little bit. And I, I think what's going to happen is when we get the finance committee here, you know, they've already had their meeting, I think they're having a meeting on Monday. So, they have their meeting on Monday, we'll have ours on Wednesday. You know, everybody's already going to be clued in what's going on. And of course, Will's going to be coming back because he still has to do some add and subtract in there to put it together the way we need it. You know, I think it'll work well.
Yeah, yeah.
The two that I met with, I think it's well worth doing the way we're doing it compared to past years.
So, the fire department's in good shape at this stage to be able to support that meeting next week?
Yes, Wayne is the one that picked the date, so, yeah. So after, I guess, so after the, because at some point, I'm not sure, I'm, I'm in short of the emails, that the full, the board has, you haven't heard all the special requests. So, you're just going to hear those as they get presented from the department heads that night?
I, I would hope we'd get them in advance.
Well, you've gotten them via email, so just make sure you read them.
Yeah, obviously, anything outside the actual budget, that'd be special, I really, we really.
And we can plug those in if we do agree with them, we can plug them into the budget.
Well, I expect they're going to announce them next week. So, I just want to make sure that we're keeping up with our emails.
I guess all I'd want to say is I'd want to avoid anyone bringing in items that have not been previously discussed to the select board meetings. Because we need.
We don't want to be on the spot yet.
We don't, anything that they want to present, we need in advance. So, we have a chance to think about this individually and can have a discussion, a good discussion. If we're presented, if it's presented raw at that time, it's just going to delay the process. You know, I don't know about you guys, but I need time to think about these things and.
So, we are emailing the budgets in full as they come over, so I have to assume that you're.
That's fine, I am, I'll read them.
So, I mean, we've got a meeting tomorrow night with the rec.
Correct.
You know, that budget probably not going to be ready for next week's meeting.
Sure, well.
You think so?
Yeah, we're just, we're just going to enter it in. I mean, they.
It's not a big budget, is it?
No, she's only got one line, so. But she's not, I think the rec we were going to put on.
Doing it two weeks from now.
Yeah, so.
So, that'll be fine, that'll be fine.
I mean, the ones I put on for next week, I knew are already 100% done. I mean, so, we're good shape.
Good, it'll be all right. Okay, awesome. Lee, let's see your hand wave, come on up.
This is my lack of knowledge, but Mark Roy, did he use his own soft, accounting software?
Yes, he did.
So, do you have in the budget an upgrade to our accounting software requirements?
We never, we never dissolved the current budget, the current software we had prior, the Trio Budgetary Modular. We still had that. So, all that's going to have to happen is we're going to get journal entries from his six months of work that'll hit the expenses and the revenues for what he maintained. We had already put the budget in. So, after July 1st came, 23, he had approved budget. We put the approved budget into the Trio Budgetary Modular. So, if you go to account such and such, you'll see the $3,000 expense line. It's all in there. So, we just haven't been hitting it the last six months because he's been maintaining it from afar. Now, we're going to get journal entries to hit those proper accounts and get us right caught up to where we need.
So, they're comparable software systems?
We're making entries to make them comparable.
I, I would also say, once you get a Director of Finance and they get their feet wet, they, if I was in that position, I would look at alternative software packages. And, you know, you know, QuickBooks Online or something like that. And, and there may be something that will provide an enhanced level of reporting, but I'll leave that to them. But that's, so, the, the point is, we've got it covered this year.
Okay.
And we'll see where it takes us next year.
Thank you.
Fair enough.
Okay, we all, where are we here? A bunch of timelines. Okay, we're all, we're all done with the budget timeline, right?
I think so, yeah.
Okay, okay, we're going to see here. Your current sheriff's special detail update.
Yep, so, Tom asked me to put together just a quick spreadsheet for you. So, we did three different four-hour blocks from the sheriff's department. So, we paid a total of $1,020 for those three details.
Is that each $1,020?
No, $340 each, so total of $1,020. The first one on December 12th, there were eight stops. There were three speeding citations, two other violations, and five additional warnings.
That was in a how long of a period?
Four hours.
Okay. Sounded like the whole police report we just read off.
So, on the 24th, Christmas Eve, 13 people got pulled over. Five speeding citations were given, three other violations, no license, inspection sticker, those kind of things. And five warnings were given. On the 27th, we stopped 12 cars. This time, we had seven speeding citations, three other, we'll keep unclassified, and two warnings.
I gotta tell you, I'm thrilled with this. I don't know what you guys think. I mean, I think, I feel like we've responded to, you know, there were some people that have come here and, you know, asked us to do this. I think it's been a great response. How often we do it going forward, I don't know, but I think we ought to continue it until we figure out what we want to do long-term with a police sheriff contract.
So, we'll put that as a reminder to talk about on the.
I just, what, what I'm smiling is, that's the most stops I've ever heard in four hours of my life. And, and looking at, and when we read through all the, you know, all the calls and stuff, because we don't see all the speeders and this and that, but just was a little overwhelming, I guess.
Well, I, I, and, you know, it, in, how much, I suspect we have budget to continue this throughout the year?
Not in the deputy line, but in other places, certainly.
I would suggest that we authorize the town administrator to continue to, you know, make arrangements with the, with the sheriff's department for these kinds of, you know, special duties. And that we leave it to her. I, I don't want to announce them, I don't want to forecast them. And it, and we just ask her to, you know, based on available money and so on, and just ask her to, to continue to do this.
So, how many do you want, how much do you want to spend? How many blocks do you want?
Well, I guess the thing is, for us, why don't you figure out how many you think we can manage?
I'd say we could, yeah, I'm thinking 5,000.
I'm happy if you just figure it out, Jennifer. I don't, I, I don't know about you, but I don't need to hear anymore about it. Although, I think it would be great to report these things out so people are aware of what we're doing. How do others feel?
Sounds good to me.
David?
David's other side.
I, I mean, I think it's good. It gives us a little bit of insight that we haven't had and that we've kind of been asking for a little bit. So, I think it's beneficial. And like, like you said, I think it's addressing a lot of the needs that we've had people come up with in the past couple of months, talking about.
And we see from the reports what the other things they have going on for our 20 hours, so. What do you think, David?
Oh, I'm all in.
All right, I'll keep you updated.
Good.
Can we make a motion on that?
Yes, I'll, I'll make a motion that we ask the town administrator to develop a plan for continuous engagement of the sheriff to provide ongoing detail, special detail for traffic, traffic management. And that we ask her to execute that.
A second, Matt.
All in favor?
Aye.
There you go. Update mileage rate.
The IRS effective July, January 1st, 2024, has gone up to 67 cents per mile. So, in the past, the board, that's the rate we've used. Just wanted to make it public and make sure that that's, you're aware of that.
I'll make a motion to increase the mileage rate to 67 cents. Seconded.
All in favor? How much did it go up from last year?
65.5.
So, it's gone up quite a bit. I remember when it was like 50.
50, yeah, I remember 50 cents. That was like three or four years ago.
Yep. It needed to go up.
It did.
A debit card request, rec cheer.
The rec committee would like to order some cheering mats. They are $160, $170 each. They'd like seven of them.
We've approved this quite a while ago, didn't we?
Well, you know, because the, must have taken them in the other room. Didn't I just have it?
Well, we approved the funds for it.
We approved, oh, hold on. Oh, there it is, sorry. We, yeah, so in the budget, you're right, David. In the budget, there was $2,000 for the line. It's not a regular debit card purchase because based on policy, it's over the $1,000 that the town administrator has, can authorize. So, the mats are $160 each, so the total of the mats are 1120. However, there's $676 in freight and a $49 processing fee, which brings our 1100 mats to 1,845.99.
Where are they coming from?
Texas.
And I'm sure, I'm sure that she went out looking for better deals, correct?
I, I mean, I asked her if she could find them any cheaper based on the freight. I personally didn't support paying the freight. And she said that would, the mats would be more expensive if she got a lower freight. But, you know.
Well, that's how they do it, is that, you know, it's going to get, it's going to be all the same one way or another.
You know, and I guess that thing for clarification for, for us is, you know, this is over the $1,000.
What are they, cheerleading mats?
Yeah. So, are we looking at the total price when we're looking at the policy? Or are we looking at the per mat price when we look at the policy?
Well, no, no, it's a whole to, total, I mean. Because honestly, at the end of the day, most of the time when you buy something, you've already got the shipping included.
Right.
Especially when you have large purchases. So, myself, I would have done that. I wouldn't want to, I wouldn't want anybody knowing I'm paying that kind of freight, but that is what it is.
So, I mean, if you.
How much were the mats?
160. If what I hear you telling me is that it needs to be the total price, then I'm going to ask you not to sign it and have her follow policy against what it is.
That is the total price. Well, no, you said 1,000, correct?
That's what the policy says.
And the mat sells at 1,100.
So, I, I guess maybe I'm, I lost you a little bit. You, are you talking that she has to bring in more different prices?
Based on your purchasing policy, it says anything over 1,000. That's why I was asking you if that meant for one item or the order together.
Still is, I mean, it's still $2,000.
It's a $2,000 item.
Yeah.
You know, you got to add it all together.
If it lands on your doorstep, it costs you 2,000 bucks.
Look, I.
Did you find any in there?
Oh, yeah.
How much are they?
Amazon's got them for 150 bucks. I don't know if they're any good, comparable with free shipping.
So, let's go to do a quick comparison.
Yeah, ask her to go back and, just do a search and see if we can get a cheaper price.
Yeah, well, I.
But, but, a good, a good mat.
Carpet hole mat.
Well, my question was, are these absolutely needed at this moment? Are this is?
Five by 10s, what size are yours? I, I can't answer that.
Well, I, look, I don't know the quality of these things and so on. I'm just saying that there are other mats out there.
Okay.
That, let me see, the 140.
If nothing else, we need a comparison.
What size were they?
Five by 10.
These are 10 by 3.
Okay.
So, you know.
All right. May we, got it.
I mean, it should only take five minutes to do what he just did. And give three different, you know, options.
Follow policy.
And, but it took him the day of the shipping and the product, it really won.
It's one.
One unit, so it didn't really, if you're over the $1,000.
Thank you.
Oh, we're down to public comment. Any public comment tonight? I don't see any. Uh, I'm actually going to read dependents tonight. I haven't been doing it in a while.
You haven't?
No, so, I'm going to do dependents tonight. Speed trailer, it's January 10th, 2024. What's that all about anyway?
So, the, the gentleman from the state, we've finally been able to get a date, we're Deputy Sanborn, and he will both come down. So, the state has, has jumped in and, and thinks that, they want first dibs before we're placed in it, trying to fix it when it's done, so.
They want first dibs on what?
Trying to fix it.
Oh, great, the state does?
State.
You said on their, does?
Yes.
Ooh, even better.